Present. We have a very, I call the Committee on Educational Policy to order. We have a long agenda. A lot of it, I'm hoping, is non-controversial, but we'll see as we go along. I'm trying to get my computer. We'll take up the following items for approval. Action item one A, the approval of the minutes of the meeting held on November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. I move the approval of action item one A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Proceed to a vote. All in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. We'll now move to address the action items on the policy calendar. Policy item one B, one A is a resolution to establish an advanced certificate program in artificial intelligence for managers at Baruch College. I call on Executive Vice Chanc- interim Executive Vice Chancellor, University Provost, Alicia Alvero, to provide further background on this item.
There's a significant and growing demand for business professionals equipped with the knowledge and skills to effectively and ethically leverage AI tools and technology to drive organizational strategy and decision-making across various industries. The Zicklin School of Business at Baruch is uniquely positioned to offer the proposed interdisciplinary graduate-level advanced certificate by leveraging their strong existing curricula and faculty expertise. Baruch College anticipates an initial enrollment at ten students in the first semester of the program, growing to thirty students by the second year, with minimal resource requirements thus making the program financially sustainable, with projections to generate sufficient revenue through enrollment to cover all operating costs in the first year. The program will only require hiring new faculty when enrollment generates sufficient revenue to support additional faculty. Provost Essig from Baruch College is available to answer any questions the committee might have about this action.
Thank you. Artificial intelligence is where we are. Are there any questions or is there any need for further explication on this? Seeing none, I move the approval of policy item one B, one A. Do I have a second?
Second.
No discussion, proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Seeing none, this matter is adopted. Policy item one B, one B is a resolution to establish a Bachelor of Arts in Black Studies at the City College of New York. Vice Chancellor Alvero, you're up again.
In June two thousand and twenty-four, the Board of Trustees approved the creation of the Black Studies Department at City College. The creation of the Black Studies major, for which there is justification based upon the establishment of the Black Studies Department, will increase the visibility of the program to prospective students and serve as a potential Hallmark program for the university's Black Race and Ethnic Studies Initiative, with enrollment anticipated to increase to ninety students in the major by two thousand and thirty. The proposed program is financially sustainable and is projected to generate sufficient revenue through enrollment to cover all operating costs in the first year. The program will only requiring hiring new faculty when enrollment generates sufficient revenue to support additional faculty. If the committee has any questions, Provost List from City College would be happy to address them.
I just have one question, please.
Yes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for being here. There's currently a Black Studies concentration at the school. And when you say you're expecting ten students, will these be taken from the Black Studies concentration or will these be additional students? Are we growing the student population? Are we just moving them from one place to another?
So the concentration, this and the next item of Jewish studies used to be under area studies. When we created the department and want to move the Black Studies program into the department, it made, I'm answering your question eventually. It made the Jewish Studies program an orphan and we had to, so we had to move this to the department in creating a major. So it's the same students. We're not taking students from the program. The program is moving to the department that we created.
Do you expect a growth of students?
I do, yes.
Because?
Because we're a college in Harlem with now a Black Studies department with a very dynamic chair. And so I think it will be big sell.
And these aren't just students who would have done the concentration before, they're, no.
I'm sorry?
These aren't just students who would have done the concentration before and they're now, we're not, we're not just re-designating them, is the word?
It's, we're doing both. I mean, we are re-designating them and then we expect it to grow as a department.
All right, well, as you grow, spend money. Until you grow, don't spend money.
Got it.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I move the approval of policy item one B, one, one B, one B. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy one B, one C is a resolution to establish a Master of Arts in Instructional Design at the City College of New York. Provost Alvero.
The national workforce is evolving with instructional design being among one of the fastest-growing sectors and the majority of positions requiring a master's degree. City College is proposing the establishment of a thirty-two-credit Masters of Arts program in instructional design administered by the Division of Interdisciplinary Studies to be offered online, including an asynchronous option, and to be taught by diverse faculty with expertise in education, program management, psychology, communication, English, and technology, with a well-structured curriculum of required courses and various elective options in instructional design. The predicted enrollment and retention of students in the program is expected to generate robust growth with projections of potentially hundreds of new students over time, with an expected retention rate of eighty percent and dozens of graduates within the program's first five years, which will increase revenue while containing costs through the use of existing faculty and college resources. If there are any questions, Dean Aguasaco of the Division of Interdisciplinary Studies can address them.
Thank you. Chancellor, I noticed that a lot of our programs today are in the area of education. And I think that's an exciting place to be right now where we're.
And, and, and there's also a lot of demand in, in the job market too.
Exactly, yeah.
A lot of teachers were lost in the pandemic.
Are there any questions? Yes.
Yeah, who do I direct them to? Who do I direct them to?
Dean Aguasaco.
We'll bring up, we'll bring up the expert.
Okay. Yeah, hello today. Um, there's a quick question. So you know, AI is very dynamic. There are lots of changes that goes on. Like just last week, there was a huge, huge development. So how would you ensure that it remains adaptable to this ever-changing environment?
That's exactly why we are creating these master's degree in instructional design. If anything, with all these transformations, with all these technologies, every single organization, not only schools and universities, and universities, every single organization that provides training needs an instructional designer to ensure that the artificial intelligence is used not to replace humans, but to help them improve their transformation of the information they gather. So this is a program that will embrace technology, that actually embraces for the right reason, which is to be transformative rather than substitutive. So I hope that's, that's a proper, a good answer.
Somewhat clear. But thank you.
That's a nice explanation.
Yeah.
Any other questions at the moment? None. I will then move the approval of policy item one B, one C. Do I have a second? Any other questions, discussion? Seeing none, let's proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is adopted. Thank you.
You can stay in case there's a question with the next one because you're on, on deck for the next one. International and trans-cultural education is one of the fastest-growing sectors in the national workforce and the majority of the positions require a master's degree. City College is proposing the establishment of a thirty-three-credit Masters of Arts program in international and trans-cultural education administered by the Division of Interdisciplinary Studies to be offered online, including an asynchronous option, and to be taught by diverse faculty with expertise in education, program management, psychology, communication, English, history, law, and economics, with a well-structured curriculum of required courses and various elective options in international and transnational education. The program is expected to be popular and gain healthy enrollment, given its flexibility as an online program with its focus on the education sector and its format, allowing students to balance professional and family obligations. Costs will be contained through the use of existing faculty and college resources, including existing facilities, services, and supports that include virtual and digital access capabilities. Dean Aguasaco can respond to questions about this item as well.
Another exciting one. Any, any questions or? I will move the approval of policy item one B, one D. Because we're up to. Do I have a second? No discussion, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere.
Yeah. Tony, you can say it.
Policy one B, one E is a resolution to establish a Bachelor of Arts in Jewish Studies at the City College of New York. Provost Alvero.
The Michael and Irene Ross Jewish Studies Program at City College has offered a wide range of courses, seminars, and lectures that examine the literature of the Jewish ancestry, their history, philosophy, mysticism, sociology, and nationalism to a highly diverse student population since two thousand and eight. And Jewish Studies has been a concentration in the interdisciplinary Bachelors of Arts in Area Studies since nineteen seventy-five. The creation of the Jewish Studies major, based on the existing concentration and associated curriculum, will increase the visibility of this established, dynamic program that is unique to the national landscape. The proposed program, which will continue to be housed in the Department of Classical and Modern Languages and Literatures, is financially sustainable and is projected to generate sufficient revenue through enrollment to cover all operating costs in the first year. The program will only require hiring new faculty when enrollment generates sufficient revenue to support additional faculty. Provost List is available to respond to the questions about this action item.
Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, so it would be the same for the last one as well. But this ties into like internship opportunities. Is it the plan, is it the plan, is it your plan to like partner with Jewish organizations to provide these internship opportunities after somebody graduates or during their, their study?
We have an office of experiential learning that works with all of our students on internship opportunities.
So this would be like, like a pipeline towards getting a career in Jewish Studies? Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? I move the adoption of policy item one B, one E. Do I have a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none. This matter is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Policy item one B, one F is a resolution to establish a doctoral program in neuroscience, leading to a doctoral philosophy degree at the Graduate School and University Center. I ask Provost Alvero to spend some time on this one.
The rising interest in neurological disorders, especially age-related cognitive dysfunction among the baby boomer generation, manifests the importance of an interdisciplinary understanding of brain function from its development to its decline. Building on the research successes in the Neuroscience Initiative at the Advanced Science Research Center, the Graduate Center's proposed sixty-credit PhD in Neuroscience Program will train the next generation of academic leaders whose research at the interface of biology, biochemistry, and psychology will place them at the frontier of knowledge creation and scientific discovery in this important field. The proposed program will draw on the Graduate Center's faculty expertise and existing curriculum in biology and psychology and will make good use of the existing resources, making it financially sustainable. The program does not require hiring new faculty and future hires will be made consistent with campus faculty hiring practices. President Brumberg, is he here?
He's right there.
Yes, there he is. Thank you.
Perfect timing.
Perfect timing. President Brumberg can address any questions the committee might have about this item.
Thank you for joining us. An exciting program. You currently have PhD programs in biology and psychology. Are those going to continue as separate programs or is this meant to replace those with concentrations as needed?
So the biology formally has four subprograms, neuroscience being one, plant science, molecular cellular development, evolutionary ecology behavior being the other three. So we're going to pull out the neuroscience subprogram from biology. Psychology has ten training areas. I can list them, but you don't want to hear them. One of them being behavioral and cognitive neuroscience. We're going to pull out behavioral and cognitive neuroscience from psychology and join them together into a coherent program. The other three subprograms of biology will remain under biology. The other nine training areas in psychology will remain under psychology.
And I noticed in the budget that there, that there will be expenses of somewhere over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars beyond the stipends for students, you know, for administrative costs or whatever. Where's that money coming from?
So some of that is, right now, we give three course releases across the two programs. Those will be pulled out of biology and psychology. So the actual additional cost for that is sixteen thousand four hundred, and we have the funds for that. The financial aid also is being pulled. The, it's what we call the Assistant Program Officer. That person has already been serving these students. We have a loose network right now called the CUNY Neuroscience Collaborative, and she serves the PhD students in neuroscience in both psychology and biology, as well as our master students in cognitive neuroscience. So she's already doing the work, but it'll now be under the neuroscience umbrella. So those are additional expenses. It's just taking them from different pots, and that's what the total sum equals.
Be prudent.
We will.
So I move the approval of policy item one B, one F. Do I have a second? Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, let's proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Thank you. Policy item one B, one G is a resolution to establish an advanced certificate in public scholarship at the Graduate School and University Center. I call on Provost Alvero to enlighten us.
The Graduate Center is uniquely qualified to launch an advanced certificate in public scholarship, given its long and rich institutional and intellectual history in this area. The proposed advanced certificate in public scholarship is of value to students pursuing tenure-track positions as well as to masters and PhD students who intend to pursue employment outside the university setting. Students will be required to complete a total of four courses in introduction to public scholarship and two additional electives from a list of approved courses. The advanced certificate in public scholarship is expected to be in high demand, thus increasing revenue while containing costs by drawing on existing Graduate Center resources and current faculty in masters and doctoral programs. Interim Provost Carey is available to answer questions about this action item.
I move the approval of policy item one B, one G. Do I have a second? Any questions or discussion? Seeing none. We will vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy item one B, one H is a resolution to establish an Associate of Science degree program in Behavioral Science at the Stella and Charles Gutman Community College. I ask Provost Alvero to help us with this.
There is currently a shortage of behavioral healthcare workers in New York City. And the United States Bureau of Labor Statistics reports that employment in behavioral health occupations is projected to grow twenty-two percent from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and thirty-one, faster than the average for all occupations nationwide. The proposed sixty-cred Associate of Science and Behavioral Science Program will provide students with the knowledge and skills necessary to become effective and compassionate behavioral health professionals while preparing them for opportunities for continued education and growth within the field. The proposed program is financially sustainable as it makes use of existing campus resources, including existing faculty expertise and curricula, and is projected to generate sufficient revenue through enrollment to cover all operating costs in the first year, thus making future costs minimal and related only to future expansion based upon increased enrollment demand over time. Provost Reifenhizer from Gutman Community College is in attendance and can respond to any questions.
I, of course, have a couple of questions.
Hello.
Good afternoon. I, it seems that this program would prepare students not only to go directly into the workforce, but also as a lead-in for bachelor's programs that would integrate with bachelor's programs?
That's correct. In fact, it would be probably more aligned to go to the bachelor's programs. And in particular, what we are going for here is the notion that some traditional psychology programs can often be theoretical largely in nature, where this is much more focused on the, you'll be working with individual clients and preparing them for those facets. And that way, that it, it allows them to understand exactly what they'll be getting into as opposed to just a theoretical knowledge of what we, of what might be going on.
And we have, we have bachelor's programs that will accept all sixty credits?
We do, and we already have one articulation agreement with John Jay.
Working on others?
Yes.
I move the approval of item one B, one H. Is there a second? Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, let's proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, this matter is approved. Thank you. Policy item one B, one.
I.
I, that's an I. Is a resolution to establish a Bachelor of Arts program in adolescent teaching education at Lehman College. Provost.
Lehman College's proposed adolescent teacher education major, which would be declared as part of a dual major in a specific concentration area, will equip students with the theoretical knowledge and practical skills necessary for a classroom teaching career. There is high demand for this discipline, as evidenced by existing adolescent education courses typically filling to capacity with students from diverse majors, and is further supported by student interest in discipline-related co-curricular activities. The predicted enrollment and retention of students and expanding market for graduates with this qualification will generate robust growth with projections of potentially hundreds of majors with an expected retention rate of eighty percent and dozens of graduates within the program's first five years. This will increase revenue while containing costs through the use of existing curriculum, faculty, and resources, with future costs being minimal and related only to future expansion based upon increased enrollment demand over time. Interim Dean Pitts of the School of Education and his colleagues are available to address questions from the committee.
I move the approval of policy item one B, one I. Do I have a second? Any discussions, questions? Seeing none, let's proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, this matter is approved. Policy item one B, one J is a resolution to establish an advanced certificate in media and information literacy and education at Lehman College. Provost Alvero, please explain this one.
Many twenty-first-century workers need to be empowered with the skills and knowledge to evaluate and produce digital media, and thus their preparation requires qualified educators and leaders who have deep knowledge of information and media literacy pedagogy. The Lehman College School of Education is proposing to create a new advanced certificate program in media and information literacy and education by leveraging the college's strong existing curricula in literacy and educational technology, teaching and learning with technology, educational leadership, digital imaging, geospatial studies, and information literacy to establish Lehman as the only Bronx-based college at CUNY to offer an advanced certificate in this area. There is high demand for media and information literacy studies, as demonstrated in the number of students from diverse majors enrolling in related courses resulting in these courses filling to capacity. Anticipated enrollment is twelve students in year one with a projection, projected twenty-five to thirty percent increase each year through, through year five. This will increase revenue while containing costs by using existing curriculum, faculty, and resources. Future projected costs will be minimal and related only to future expansion based upon increased enrollment demand over time. Dean Pitts can respond to questions about this item as well.
Thank you. I move the approval of policy item one B, one J. Do I have a second? Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy item one B, one K is a resolution to establish a Bachelor of Science degree in bilingual early childhood and childhood education at Queens College. Again, I ask Provost Alvero to help us with this.
New York State and the nation are experiencing a decades-long shortage of bilingual educators, which has been further exacerbated during and after the pandemic, as well as by the influx of new arrivals, including asylum-seeking students and families to New York City's public schools. Eighteen percent of the New York City Public School student population are multilingual learners, with Queens hosting the largest number. The Queens College School of Education is among the largest producers of educators within the borough of Queens, offering a hundred and fifty-four registered programs. Queens College seeks to expand its offerings by introducing this Bachelor of Science program, which will provide a direct pathway for certification in three distinct areas for undergraduates. The proposed program is financially sustainable and is projected to generate sufficient revenue through enrollment to cover all operating costs in the first year. The program will only require hiring new faculty when enrollment generates sufficient revenue to support additional faculty. President Wu is in attendance to support the questions from the committee about the proposed program.
I move the approval of policy item one B, one K. Do I have a second? Thank you. To the Provost. Are there other bilingual education programs throughout the system?
Yes.
And, but this one is, this one is particular for adolescents? Did I get the right one?
No.
No.
Early childhood.
Early childhood.
Early childhood is different than elementary childhood. And, yeah.
Okay. Good, I like this one. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Someone just reached out to me. Policy item one B, one L is a resolution to establish an advanced certificate in disability advocacy at the School of Professional Studies.
That's me.
You're up.
The CUNY School of Professional Studies houses the largest disability studies program in the United States and is well-positioned to meet the growing demand for formal education and disability advocacy. SPS proposes a twelve-credit online advanced certificate in disability advocacy that will prepare a new generation of leaders to further the cause of equal access and opportunity for people with disabilities. The proposed certificate presents no negative impact on the school or its operations, takes advantage of existing infrastructure, and has been designed for maximum scalability. The program will require hiring new faculty only when enrollment generates sufficient revenue to support additional faculty with the larger disability studies suite of offerings. The academic director of Disability Studies Program at SPS, Andrew Markham, is available to answer any questions from the committee.
I move the approval of policy item one B, one L. Do I have a second? Yeah, my only question. Are the credits in this advanced certificate program transferable to degree programs and other programs?
Yes, I'm.
Well, we have Provost Jennifer Sparrow instead.
Naked today, so I'm here in his stead. Yes, they will articulate into the Masters in Disability Studies.
Terrific. Any other questions, discussion? Seeing none, let's proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy item, can we do M, N, and O together? It seems like they would, they work as a unit. Is that all right?
Are we on L though?
We just approved Dell.
We just approved Dell.
Oh, oh, sorry. Wrong page.
So we have two advanced certificates and one MA, all in early childhood programs?
Do you want me to introduce them all and then have discussion?
All at once and, and we'll bring up our, our helper and we'll go from there.
Sounds good. Okay, the growth of programs for young children and their families demands leaders with training beyond basic early childhood education, which includes awareness and skills related to systems theories, economics, political science, the business of education, data analysis, and implementation processes that will allow children's program administrators to manage the delivery of early childhood educational services effectively. The proposed eighteen-credit online program builds on current infrastructure, presents no negative impact on SPS or its operations, and will afford students the opportunity to complete required graduate coursework for the Children's Program Administrator credential of New York State, recognized as a standard by which to measure program management, fiscal management, and leadership abilities of early childhood and school-age program administrators. The new program will be supported by one current full-time and six current adjunct faculty, requiring the hiring of one new adjunct faculty member with no need to hire new full-time faculty until such time when enrollment generates sufficient revenue to support additional faculty. For evaluations of early childhood policy by analysts, education leaders, and government officials reveal the important gaps in the field, indicating a need for improved training programs that help professionals design, analyze, and advocate for evidence-based policies while also teaching the necessary leadership skills for future administrative roles. The Masters of Arts Program in Early Childhood Policy and Leadership is a thirty-credit online masters program, is financially sustainable, and designed to address a growing need to enhance the study of early childhood policy. It is projected to. It is projected to generate sufficient revenue through enrollment to cover all operating costs in the first year and an expected enrollment growth of sixty percent over the first five years. The new program will be supported by one current full-time faculty member and six current adjuncts, requiring the hiring of one new adjunct faculty member with no need to hire new full-time faculty until such time when enrollment generates sufficient revenue to support additional faculty. Oh, yeah. I think these are the only two we can do, because the next one is LaGuardia. Is that right? Yeah. So, we have Donna Anderson and Claudine Campanelli are available to respond to questions.
All right. We have the Advanced Cert in Early Childhood Policy, the Advanced Cert in Children's Program Administration, and the Masters in Early Childhood Policy and Leadership.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And again, my question will be whether the Advanced Cert credits are transferable into the Masters Program.
Hello.
Hey there.
The early childhood policy, which is the twelve credits, as well as the eighteen-credit Children's Program Administrator Certificate, will be both articulating into the Masters Program.
This is a great package of programs. It's sort of all, all comes together, yes.
Exactly. Stackable.
Stackable.
It's supposed to be stackable, correct.
I move Policy.
You want to move it and then ask the questions?
If I may, I can move them together if we have questions. I move Policy Items 1B1M, N, and O. Do I have a second? Are there any questions?
All right. I just have one question about the, a lot of references to the online learning. Is it all synchronous? Is it a smattering of synchronous and asynchronous?
It's asynchronous.
Okay, great. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, let's proceed to a vote. Is this all right to vote on all three together? We'll vote on all three. Those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? These three programs are approved.
Thank you.
We got through those. All right. Policy Item 1B2A is a resolution from LaGuardia Community College to close the Counseling Department and transfer its faculty to the Department of Community Health and Wellness and the Department of Education and Language Acquisition. Doctor Alvaro, what can you tell us?
The Counseling Department at LaGuardia Community College has experienced a significant loss of faculty through retirement and departures. It now has four remaining faculty members, one of whom is a tenured professor, and three of whom are lecturers with certificates of continuous employment. The department no longer offers any courses or programs and discontinued its academic program offerings. The remaining faculty will be transferred to the Department of Community Health and Wellness and the Department of Education and Language Acquisition, based on their disciplinary and scholarly fit. With the approval of the relevant faculty and budget committees, as well as the college senate, the college has determined that it can better serve its students by closing the Counseling Department and transferring the remaining faculty to other departments. Provost Gastick Rosado of LaGuardia Community College is available to respond to questions the committee might have.
I move the approval of Policy Item 1B2B. Is there a second? I have a question. What have these four faculty members been doing? And what will they be doing in their new departments? There are no courses, no programs?
So, they currently work as, they are licensed social workers, and so they're working in our counseling, in our wellness center, seeing a caseload of students. But they, they are, their status as faculty dates back to a time when counselors were faculty. And so, that is why there is a retirement, and that, that department has shrunk over time. Their service to the college will remain the same, just their academic home will now move to these different departments.
But they won't be teaching any courses. They'll just continue to do their counseling functions?
Right. They have, they have not been teaching courses. They've been working directly with, providing direct service to students as their social workers.
Any questions further? Proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by somehow. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. I think that Policy Item 1B3A is a resolution to amend the Charter of Governance at Hostos.
You need 1B2B.
Oh, I missed 2B.
2B or not B.
2B or not 2B, right.
B will be. Policy Item 1B2B is, oh, this is very technical.
This is a very, yeah.
Very technical. A resolution to transfer its degree authority for programs at the CUNY School of Medicine to the Graduate School and University Center. And this is technical, so walk us through it.
Sure. In 2024, the Board of Trustees passed a resolution authorizing the transition of the CUNY School of Medicine from a school at City College to an independent entity under the Graduate Center. With this new status, the medical school will derive its degree authority from the Graduate Center, similar to other independent units at the GC, such as the CUNY Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy, and will be included in the scope of the regional accreditation of the Graduate Center by the Middle States Commission on Higher Education. Board of Trustees' approval is needed to submit a formal request to the New York State Education Department for the transfer of degree authority, as well as to ensure compliance with the requirements of professional accreditors and the United States Department of Education for purposes of financial aid. The transfer of degree authority is a key step in the implementation of the prior Board of Trustees' resolution to transition the medical school to the status of a unit at the Graduate Center. The medical school will implement a strategy to minimize disruption to existing students currently completing their degree programs. Upon completion of the degree authority transfer, the medical school would be, oh, will be better positioned to attract outstanding faculty, improve its visibility, and diversify its fundraising capacity. Dean Green of the School of Medicine and her colleagues are in attendance to address questions from the committee.
A required next step.
That's right.
I move the approval of Policy Item 1B2P. Do I have a second? Any questions? Discussion? Proceed to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? We approve this. Thank you. Now, it gets to 1B3A, a resolution to amend the Charter of Governance at Hostos Community College. Provost Alvaro.
The Hostos Community College Charter of Governance was initially adopted by the Board of Trustees in September 1992 and was last amended in 2021. The college recently reviewed the charter in consideration of the proposed amendment to change the current name of the Mathematics Department to the Mathematics and Computer Sciences Department. The department name change, which was unanimously approved by the college's governance body and has the support of the president, aims to better represent the varied course offerings of the Mathematics Department without changing the charter's governance structure. Provost Wang is available to respond to questions about this item.
This seems about as technical as it can get, right?
Yep.
We're recognizing that math and computers sort of.
Correct.
I move the approval of Policy Item 1B3A. Do I have a second? Any discussion, any questions? Seeing none. All in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy Item 1B4A is a resolution to appoint Michael Hughes with immediate tenure at Baruch College with a waiver of bylaws 6.2.0B.
Based on the thorough review of the evidence presented, it is recommended to the Board of Trustees that Michael Hughes be awarded immediate tenure. On December 23, Dr. Hughes received approval for his appointment as full professor with tenure from Baruch College Personnel and Budget Committee. Later today, the Board Committee on Finance and Administration will consider a parallel appointment of Dr. Hughes as dean and chief librarian at Baruch College. Dr. Hughes has a sustained record of exceptional scholarship, including multiple peer-reviewed journal articles in both Libraries Studies and Philosophies book chapters published by the Association of College and Research Libraries, as well as two translations of seminal philosophy texts. Having earned a PhD and MA in Philosophy from SUNY Stony Brook, a Master's in Library and Information Science from Long Island University, and a BA in English Literature from New York University, Dr. Hughes is a highly-trained and skilled interdisciplinary academic. Dr. Hughes has thirty years of progressive experience spearheading librarian services within higher education sector, including roles at the CUNY Central Office, Brooklyn College, and NYU. Should the committee have questions about this request to award immediate tenure, Provost Essig is available to address them.
Thank you, Provost. I move the approval of Policy Item 1B4A. Do I have a second? Thank you. Are there any discussion, any questions? Seeing none, let's proceed to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy Item 1B5A is a resolution to approve the Faculty Personnel Matters Report of the Educational Policy Committee. Provost Alvaro.
The information contained in the Faculty Personnel Matters Report of the Education Policy Committee includes appointments and reappointments with tenure and fellowship leaves. The report presented today was generated in summary format from faculty data entered by the campuses into CUNY First between October 21, 2024, and December 16, 2024.
I move the approval of Policy Item 1B5A. Do I have a second? Any discussion or any questions on the report? Proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy Item 1B5P is a resolution to approve the actions in the Curriculum and Academic Policy Dashboard Report. Provost Alvaro.
Routine academic matters, local academic policies, and course inclusions in the university's general education program are presented to the Committee on Education Policy in summary format generated from an online dashboard. Highlights from this month's dashboard include the classification of sixteen new general education courses, giving students more options to study the sciences, mathematics, and humanities, twenty-eight program actions, and three revised undergraduate policies.
I move the approval of Policy Item 1B5B. Do I have a second? Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, let's proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy Item 1B6A is a resolution to approve the CUNY Master Plan. I think we're going to need a few minutes on this.
Sure.
Talk to us about it.
All right. Under Section 6206 of the New York State Education Law, the City University of New York is required to submit to New York State Education Department a master plan that serves as a guiding document outlining goals, key initiatives, and measures of success. In accordance with New York State law, the New York State Regents will review such plan and incorporate the plan with the SUNY Master Plan for the 2026-2034 statewide master plan, which will also include the plans from the Commission on Independent Colleges and Universities and the Association of Private Colleges for the eight-year period from 2026 through 2034. The CUNY Master Plan addresses five areas of concern outlined by the Board of Regents in May 2024 and is also based on the university-wide initiative to create and implement a strategic roadmap, which involved a steering committee and engaged over 2,000 members of the university community from summer 2021 to spring 2023. In the fall of 2024, the CUNY Master Plan was vetted by certain members of university leadership, the central office, and by faculty, staff, students, and administrators across the university. I am happy to answer. Any questions?
This integrates with our strategic plan and everything else we've been doing for the last couple of years.
And it needs to be sort of certified in line with the state.
Because the state wants another report.
Exactly. That's exactly right.
You got it.
I move the approval of Policy Item 1B6A. Is there a second? Are there any questions? Discussion?
Just a comment. You know, I was reading through, and under goal, one of the initiatives has to do with the modern approach to admissions, financial aid, scheduling, and other programs and services. Please, like, you know, this is, a lot of students, especially just today, you know, were just complaining about being pissed off at the financial aid office. It's a problem CUNY-wide, you know? So, I would really love if this, if this gets ahead of the game before I leave CUNY.
Absolutely. And always in those things, the more concrete the situations that can be highlighted, the easier it is for us to be able to address them either as a specific problem or something that is systemic.
But the modernized approach is really needed, because in many cases, it's way behind. It's like twenty years ago, you know? But that's really.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. I believe I can say with no more items on the agenda, I move to adjourn this meeting. Is there a second? Any opposition? Thank you all for working through this.
There you go.